People we're gonna get.
Heard in the wall.
Sure.
I was like, can we cut a hole and get it out? I was like, I'll do it after hours. You see the value of that, right?
There's people there. Yes, absolutely.
Oh, my God. What was that? Like, you know, me and Dolby infection as you go on?
The size that.
The exact. It was like in that wall there.
You probably are aware, because I know you've done your research. If things went.
What is that?
We spoke about using the lower level, part of the lower level of the police station, if it moved, as the food bank. And that may interest some folks to know that it could potentially have a decent hole.
There's definitely lots of uses for it.
There are lots of uses. And, you know, there's an outside door right there already. It could be an excellent place for food. Anyway, that's just.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I thought upstairs, since there's not a lot to look at. If you guys were up there, it'd be great to talk.
Sure, sure. Happy to. Love to.
What you guys did and.
Love to.
Great time.
Yes.
That information.
Do that. Do that, right?
Well, I did. I think the other ones are up here, unless you know.
It's six o'clock.
Well, I'll go to Saturday.
You know, we'll go from there. You hope the best.
It being six o'clock, I will call this meeting of the Enfield Board of Selectmen to order. We have going to have an introduction to Microsoft Teams again.
We can find it, yes.
Okay. And then after that, we will go slide into a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, now that I have it up and I can see it. Everyone's mic, then who was on the joining by team, your mic is disabled. When you want to speak, use the react icon, which looks like a little hand, and you can raise your hand, and you will be called on to speak, at which time we'll on, we'll enable your microphone. Your camera icon will allow you to turn your camera on and off. Chat is disabled, and live captions, similar to closed captions, are only visible to those who have turned it on. So if you want to have text at the bottom of your screen that tells you what we're saying, you can go to the three dots where it says more, scroll down to turn on live captions, and you'll have the text. Now, it is based on voice recognition, so it's not always completely accurate. So if it doesn't make sense, we have to blame it on the technology.
Okay, now we're going to go into a public hearing on petition warrant article number seventeen. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are going to have this public hearing to discuss warrant article number seventeen. It will be voted April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at the business session of town meeting. By petition, are you in favor of increasing the Board of Selectmen to five members? Here we go. And now we are open for public discussion. Someone had their hand up?
Tracy.
Oh, Tracy, go for it.
I'll read a that paragraph, if you will. Our members of the town Enfield Select Board work hard and diligently to manage town affairs and respond to the needs of the citizens of Enfield. Select Board members, in addition to serving on the Select Board itself, currently also serve on the following: Planning Board, Budget Committee, Heritage Commission, Old Home Days Committee, Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee, attend governmental training sessions, supervise and coordinate the town manager, and respond to public inquiries and requests in regards to daily issues. I'll add to that one that was added at the last meeting, a participation in the new branding committee. As the management of municipal affairs has become increasingly complicated, it has become apparent there would be benefits in having additional members on the board to share the time commitment and the responsibilities of individual members. It will bring enhanced perspectives to the discussions and represent our diverse community of single residents, couples, families with children, seniors, and all groups of citizens. The larger Select Board will allow residents to become more involved citizens and be beneficial townwide. For these reasons, we recommend an expansion of the current Select Board size to five members, as other towns of very similar size, such as Sunapee and Haverhill, have done. And we ask for support on that issue.
Thank you. Other comments? Both from citizens here and online?
Dave Boppe has his hand up.
Who?
Dave Boppe.
Dave.
You have to unmute.
You have to unmute.
So you have to let me un, you have to release me, and then I have to unmute. Is that correct? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You're fine now.
Okay. Um, I agree with the, with most of the things that, that Tracy just said regarding the workload and how to, to deal with that within the, in the community. However, given the list that Elisa posted, I believe it was last week or maybe ten days ago, regarding the number of committees that need additional members, I have concern that just getting somebody to commit to the, to the, the amount of work necessary for doing that may be very difficult, as it's already difficult for many of the town committees. The advantages of being able to do subcommittees without the, creating a quorum certainly has some, some basis too. And I just wonder how either the Select Board or Tracy and other members signing the petition would respond to those questions.
Well, I think that, I don't believe the Select Board is part of this petitioning process, although I'm sure we each have our own individual take on that. And I'm not sure I want to speak my piece now. I'd rather hear from everybody else. But I do wish to say something later on.
I'd like to address the question about committee memberships and the list. So I don't think that that concern, while I understand where it comes from, I don't think that concern is more than optics, because in the past, we have had the same number of openings. What hasn't happened is this nice process of saying, hi, we have these openings and offering the list. So they got filled by members of the committee, and this is, and I feel, a very good opportunity to invite more people to participate, who wouldn't necessarily be in the friend group or the interest group of others. So it's not that there aren't volunteers for those roles. I don't think that's what the problem is. It's not extending opportunity to new people, because we see the same folks over and over, right? And you know that. You're one of them. I'm one of them. And so just making sure that we're welcoming and have some diversity of opinion. I don't, the, the one, I don't know, do we have any positions on there that do not have any applicants? To, oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then we, we may occasionally have a, do, old home days, is there a statutory requirement that we have? No, that, and then we get carried away sometimes. Well, we'd like to have a selectment. Well, you know, maybe not, you know? But anyway, back to you folks. Yes.
Eric Russell. I guess as a, an incoming member of the Select Board, I'm in favor of this. More participation is good for the community. More diversity of opinion and thought and participation will be good. I, I do think we'll have people interested in the positions, should it open up. And that the overall level of commitment is a concern for some people. So by spreading it amongst five, I, I do think we'll address some of that for some members of the community.
That's an interesting question, you know, that we do not have a lot of people jumping in to run for the Board of Selectmen. I have run five times now. The first time, I had one person run against me. Other than that, I've been the only person on the ballot.
I think that's an excellent point, John, though, because when somebody talks to me about who's gonna run, what's, they say, oh, wait, is that John C? And then they're happy with you, right? So no one runs against you, is some of it, right? In a small town, because it feels like that seat belongs to someone. And, and usually someone like me, you know, someone runs against me because they're not happy with what I do. I respect that. But I also think giving people an opportunity to cycle in. I certainly have had people who have asked me this time around, and we had more than one person interested in, you know, the seats. So I think there are people, but they don't necessarily want to campaign against each other when they're not of dissimilar mindsets too. So making it so that we're not excluding people. I also like the idea that I could give one of you a call and be like, wow, I have this crazy idea. And you could be like, yep, that's nuts, or I'm willing to consider it, right? We don't have that dialogue, and I was the member of the Select, the School Board, and we had seven people. And so you could do some subcommittee work without a quorum, and do some real groundwork and agreement, and then bring it to the board, so it's partially better, feed it back down to the committee and get some of that work done. So I guess that's, I, I'm open to that idea.
You're raising that crucial point, that if we talk between each other, we are a forum.
Yeah, and I usually am very, very careful, probably more so than anyone, because I have been actively pursued by a certain subset of people in this region who just live to give me a hard time, and they're just looking for an opportunity. So I try very, very hard to make sure that, you know, I'm like, hey, I might send you something for scheduling, say, let's say, review. I think that's one of the ones we usually schedule ourselves, right? Like, I've noticed we haven't done a town manager review or something like that in the past, not currently. And I think that's something I would feel a lot more comfortable writing those emails. Like, I don't intend to use it to usurp public opinion. I would rather do it to advance it and advance involvement.
I have talked with some people over the years about this possibility of going to five at the selectment. And, and the one thing, a few people have said to me is, it doesn't always work very well. Sometimes it does. But there are towns I think you could point to, I think Norwich has five. I think Claremont has five. No, they only.
They have nine.
They have nine?
Yeah.
Well, no wonder. I mean.
Keenly sixteen, I think.
What, what happens sometimes then is there's more cliquishness. You got the group of three, the group of two, and, and it becomes more politicized. One thing about three people, we have to work together. I mean, there's no way around it. We, we can't get cliquish. We, we can't, or nothing will happen in the town. And so I, I'd love to, you know, actually, I was trying to make a list of, of towns in the area, and I just couldn't get the information. Who has three? Who has five? So I threw up my hands and said, well, I better do some schoolwork.
Bristol has, I know Bristol has five, and that's one of the places we visited and talked about modeling, because they seem to actively be progressing forward on how they run their town, and they have a similar subset of lake people and mountain folks and tourism and access to the interstate. So, and I thought that was really interesting, because I did look around. You're right, it's not easy to find. You have to actively hunt and kind of think about who you might be like to find them. It's, it's definitely something, I think, too, it is, I had active conversations with prior town managers about how it can be more work managing it, but, so my opinion is that we should be creating policy as a group and leaving day to day to the town manager and just asking questions. Like, right now, we're still in the process of transferring knowledge, I think. We were very lucky to have Jack do some of that knowledge transfer, which doesn't always happen. And Jack didn't get that benefit. And in the interim, we kind of filled in. I think things that dropped, that I would like to see happen again, are CIP. We don't have a rep on CIP. And I think there's other places we could use some oversight. Conservation Commission has actively asked if one of us would like to be there. And it just gets to be, as you know, it's like, it's a lot of nights out. It's definitely what we signed up for, but, and I think Old Home Days has someone, because that was one of their concerns, was that they came to us and they wanted us to go to one of their meetings. We were like, wait, we've got so many. So, and I, I understand, because that liaison piece is important, but it's not super realistic with different people.
Yes.
Sue Young, I, I'm in favor of increasing the board to five. Not because my husband wrote the petition, but I think there are a lot of valid points have been brought up, but I also think we just came out of, and we're still in it, actually, two years of COVID. And right now, we've got two Select Board members sitting here. And if there had been, COVID had hit the Select Board hard, we'd have maybe just one Select Board member able to function for, in, in, for a month or whatever. Also, having just had an individual in the family have a serious ski accident that ended up in the hospital for three weeks, that could happen to a board member as well. So when you have five people, you've got backup. And I think that's very important when you're handling as much detail and as much important work as you all are every day for the town.
Thank you.
I'll admit to everybody that I, while I have been tested and do not have COVID, I feel like boiled death from allergy season, and I told Ed that earlier, but I couldn't feel like boiled death and go home and lay down because I had to be here. And it, that's just, I understand, that's, that's just what I signed up for, and I'm not gonna like kill anyone by being here. I don't have COVID, but it might not have been the day I would be here. It's right. Lots of, thank you, cold medicine, allergy medicine. So it, it's definitely a valid concern. I mean, it's one particularly today that rings true.
Yes, Tracy.
I, I see it also as an opportunity for the citizenry to have another line of communication. And that potentially helps to involve them, so that if someone doesn't happen to know any of the current select persons, then with five, they might have someone who knows someone and can say, well, I just want to talk to one of them about this question I have. So it can provide further education about the town. It can provide an opportunity for them to get an, a simple answer sometimes, without causing a disruption certainly, but just becoming a little more knowledgeable about the town. And ultimately, and I don't mean immediately, of course, this can lead to their greater involvement in town affairs. A minor point also is it's more eyes on town properties and roads. And I think that's a great thing in this day and age, to simply have more eyes out there to say, hey, did you happen to see the road condition in such a place? I don't normally drive there, but I saw it. Or perhaps the condition of a building ahead of time, that just nobody had had a chance, because everybody's busy. It's just more eyes out there to watch out for town properties, town roads, other conditions in town. So I see it optimistically, frankly, as an opportunity for folks to become involved in the town, not necessarily as select persons, but simply to have that resource available.
Thank you. Other comments? From the public here or online? David?
My previous comments were, were in the regarding questions that I had with it. I appreciate this discussion, and I will probably end up voting for it with some hesitation, but voting for it in any case.
Okay, thank you. Last comment? Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to close the public.
Oh, motion to close the public here. Oh, we have one more? Ah.
Hey, Nancy, you can unmute.
I did it. I just wanted to say that I am, I know of people that would run for Select Board if they had, if, if there were fewer committees involved and fewer nights of the week involved. And I, I, I think it's a lot that we, we ask of you all to cover this whole territory. And I think it, if we would be better off, it was, if it was spread a little thinner. So, thanks. Now I need to figure out how to turn it off.
Elisa's got it covered.
My feeling is, I don't think any of us would be doing less. We would just, as a group, be doing more. No, I, I think that's just the way things work, but nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, because we have the minimum legal requirements for committee membership, and so we would have those covered. And then the one, so you don't have a legal obligation, but maybe should have an active interest, you'd be able to cover.
You're right. Yeah.
So if there's no one else, I'll make them.
Are you here for this public hearing?
No.
No, okay.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, on to the approve of the minutes of April fourth, regular meeting, and April thirteenth, public hearing. I've looked them both over. They seem good to me.
Um, yeah, because I sent the one.
Yeah.
That was just the housekeeping. Okay. I would make a motion, we accept both minutes as concepts.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, the board reports? I have nothing to report.
I attended the Eva Coffee with those folks at the Community Building last Friday. It was well-attended, and some new folks joined, and Don Arshenbow of Gen Y Creative was the host. So I guess one of the messages that they wanted to convey to the public was that you don't have to have a physical, land-based business to, like a storefront, in order to host coffee. There are opportunities to host at places in town. There are many, many small businesses in this town, and you don't, that you won't think of, because they don't necessarily have a storefront that's right somewhere you travel all the time. So they wanted me to, and everybody else, to convey to their friends and neighbors, who are business folks, that there's an opportunity to share some connections with the community. And there was a planning board meeting. It's like, what else did I do? There was a planning board meeting, and I have a memory failure.
It was mostly, we mostly talked about the master plan.
Oh, right. Oh, yes, it was an excellent, gosh, it was a really long meeting. That's why I'm like. We went through all of the chapters of the master plan that we had so far, and really great feedback from folks, just in terms of how they visually viewed it, how they were thinking about it, what added value for them, what make, might make things more clear, and I thought it was a really great session. Thank you. This is my burden.
So when do you think this part of the master planning process will be done? Do you have any?
Idea? Well, so, and Lindsay is here as well, and she actually is the co-chair. Do you want to answer and not have me answer for you?
Sure. So our hope is to present where it's at, at, at town meeting. There's gonna be some more public information sessions, not as in-depth, but just presenting a, a more of a, a more complete, less drafty draft. So one that has less. And, and we're, my goal is by June to have this part, I've loved it to be done, like by June, because all of us on the Master Plan Task Force need a break, or at least I need a break. And then we'll start in with the next chapters in September. So that's our goal. And it's, it's still probably a fairly intense goal, just to get all the, the feedback and be able to process it, and then, and present it to the planning, well, to the.
The planning board, yeah.
The planning board, and also present it to the Select Board, just courtesy-wise. But the planning board, I guess, is the one who really gets the sort of adopted.
Maybe we could just post it together and save people multiple minutes.
But we're hoping early in the summer, because then we can take a little break and then reconvene.
And so what's the next chapter?
Next chapters, I believe, are gonna, we're, we're trying to do anything that we have a committee or commission in town, I think are the most logical ones. So energy, recreation, heritage, and I think facility is a really important one, since we have a facilities committee. So those are the, the next four.
Thank you.
Conservation.
Well, I think, yeah, conservation, sorry.
Oh, is conservation going separately from land use? Yes. Okay, it's a separate chapter. I know we were doing the required chapters first, right?
Yeah.
I think is how.
Well, I mean, so what, the only two that are required by the state are land use and, and vision. Right? Yeah, those are the only two that are required. Everything else is optional, and there's like thirteen, fourteen potential suggested ones. And so we were trying to do based off of what we already have formal structures in the town for versus like, and then, and build from there.
Makes sense.
And there was some discussion in the planning board meeting about using a positive inviting voice and tone about how we approach it and prioritizing some of, there's some very nice goal setting and references and prioritizing and cleaning them up, so that people can take them in visually and not be overwhelmed. Like, there's, there's some great SWOT analysis, and if you look at it at first, and then you're like, at the end, you're like, this is SWOT analysis, so just, there, it was, I think, a really productive conversation. And then there are pieces everybody knows, like, obviously, the bridge in Lebanon is placeholder, right? Like, we know that. So maybe we'll get some nice spring, happy greenery and more pictures.
Yeah, actually, we do need to put a call out to the public and other places to get pictures. That was one, and in our focus groups, one of the biggest pieces of feedback was, was some of the pictures. And, and our consultant is doing her best. I mean, she's pulling things from the internet, and they have to be in a certain size and quality, and also fit, so where you can put wording on top of them. And, you know, there's different requirements. So we may, it's, actually, stuff that you take with your iPhone is good enough, but it has to be, like, people have to send, like, the full file, not, not the short, smaller one. And so there's, there's some requirements, but we may end up having to put out a call for some photos and, and some of that. So there's definitely, like, one picture that actually faces Lebanon versus faces Enfield. We got a lot of feedback on photos. So, so there's, there's definitely a lot of cleanup to do. We're, we're at a good place. And since most of this is web-based, it's a, there's lots of layers that still have to get put in. So hyperlinks, and like, so that when people are reading it, you're really getting the top layer, but then you can kind of dive down deeper, depending on what rabbit hole do you want to fall into.
And all of the references and the cross.
Yeah.
Cross.
And there's some themes that need to go across, and we have to make sure. So there's, there's still a ton of work to do, but it should. Brand is, Brand is very, very talented, and when we give her the right direction, she can get it done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other board reports? Town manager's report.
Okay, yes, well, thank you for your, for your time. I wanted to, to give a slight update on the bond articles, just keeping some discussion moving forward. We are having open houses this week, so Wednesday evening from six to eight. The Whitney Hall Police Department Fire Station on Union Street and the ambulance facility will be open for people to, to come look at those buildings and talk to people that'll be there stationed to help answer questions and show people around. We will also be doing that Saturday morning from nine o'clock to twelve o'clock. So it'll be good. And one of the things we discussed tonight is, in Whitney Hall, we're gonna, of course, have the town offices and library open upstairs. We'll open up the hall so you can look in it, but we will not be taking people up into the balcony and cupola for liability reasons, but I'll, we'll get some pictures made up, so people can see what it, what it does look like up there, and some concepts of what we're looking at doing, so you can see what the, what the renovations would do. So we will be having that this week. Elisa really worked hard today. We've been working on getting that bond application in. As I told you at last meeting or the meeting before, that they were moving the bond applications up to June. So they actually were due today. So we, we got that done. We got it put in. We do need to have some discussions as we move forward if these pass, that, you know, getting those bonds early are gonna be great, save us money on interest rates, but it also may minimize the amount of grants that we can get, because once we apply for those bonds and we have substantial funding, and it's hard to make a case that we don't have funding. So it's, it's something that we're gonna need to talk about and strategize as we move forward.
So they won't give us the grant if we don't have approval, but we can necessarily get a grant if we do have approval, like, no.
Well, no, once we have.
I'm like, wait.
Once we have the bond, we have to get approval from the taxpayers to move forward.
Okay.
But once we lock in the bond and get the money back, then we have funding, if you know what I'm saying. So it's hard to say we don't have the funding if we have it, and there's a few grants out there that may work with us on that, but there's other ones that it'll disqualify you from. So it's just something to, to think about and talk about. It's kind of a little. it's just something to to think about and talk about. It's kind of a little, I guess, roll the dice. Which way do we wanna go? The grant's not guaranteed for sure and so we can we can put that work together and what the what the change in interest rate might be. It's always a projection, but we can look at what the cost is because on seven, five, or thirteen million dollars, if they both pass, you know, a percentage or two on a bond could be a lot of money. And so we'll just have to have those conversations. There's other places that we had talked to you about smaller grants, grant to outfit the emergency operations center, those types of things that we would still be eligible for and we could still work on. But the larger facility type grants might be harder to get. Um, with that, I wanted to update as well. We're still working on the scenic byways grant that I told you about. Um, we will be, I did put in a letter of intent for that and we'll be working on um putting in May sixth for the the actual grant. Probably should have came before you for permission tonight, but it's something we're working on. I do have an application into um to DOT both for the trail along Route four A because it would be in the right of way for the state. So they have to give approval for that. And the parking along Mascoma Lakeside Park is on Main Street. They'd also have to give approval for that. So we we do have drawings and and ask into DOT to see if we can start that review process to get permission. Um, like I said, May sixth, this this grant's due to and New Hampshire DOT, and then they have until June twenty-second, I think, to get it turned into federal government. They're gonna pick a few of them across the state to actually apply on behalf of the state for this money. So so I'll keep you advised and maybe we'll come at the next meeting.
Yeah, will we get to see some of these uh schemes before we go any further?
Yes, I can put that on the next agenda to to talk about that. The grant, I believe, may be put in. No, it'll be right before we submit for that. So yeah, we can, we can do that. They're very, well, the the parking's a little bit more detailed. The the trail along four A is
Oh, yeah, it's the parking that I get much of that. That I get questions about. So
Okay, yes, I can definitely.
That's more pertinent at the moment.
I can definitely share the parking and. Okay, and then the the rebranding and logo that we've talked about, we have our first meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. So we're gonna get together. We'll do some organization and plan for future meetings and then do do a little bit of brainstorming and starting the creative process hopefully tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we continue to look for a recreation director. We've resubmitted um our ad, so we're we're accepting applications again at this time and we'll be moving forward with interviews hopefully in the near future. Um, just so you know, you may have heard of this little bit of an issue, but the fiber optics that we have upstairs from First Light that run through our building and we use this space, I have contacted them and I'm working with them to set a meeting to actually sign a formal lease for that space and move forward. Um, as Jack was talking about, I've I've put forward a proposition to them to to exchange that space for good internet service to the town facilities. So we'll be we'll be continuing to work on that and hopefully we can we can trade that space that we're using for for good free internet for the town or for town.
Will you be allowing one entity to sublet to another on our property or will there be a notification requirement?
Um, we should have a notification at least, but they do sublet right now.
Oh, I know.
There's two other ones, but so it'll be it'll be part of that. You know, First Light is a middle mile type fiber.
Yeah.
So they to provide to our citizens from there, they do sublet to other providers and
Are we providing the electricity to run their operation?
We have been, so.
For free and they've been making money by subletting?
Yes.
That's adorable.
So we will be working on a contract to to make sure we're at least getting something out of that. And I think that's the plan for right now is to have them have them help us monitor how much energy usage they are using. And I believe that'll be offset. I don't believe it's that much money. So I think it'll be offset if we can get good internet services at our facilities. So
But we shouldn't be paying for internet on top of providing a space and paying for the electricity and providing them a revenue stream by subletting. That doesn't seem appropriate.
And then on top of that, I've had a a very brief initial discussion that I'll be entering into again with Hub sixty-six wanting to lease a little bit more space up there and they they said that they would be more than willing to work with us on a payment plan or something to to make sure it was worth the worth it to the town to give them a little bit more space to work.
Um, there's a there's an internet um ad hoc committee that Rob was leading and I sat in on a couple of those. I think one of the important takeaways is that there um the newer folks um who are working with First Light seem to be willing to make connections at houses. And before it was substantially set up fee and you know, like one person that was given a quote of fourteen thousand dollars to connect directly across another connection. So I think some of those things need to play into because we have to have people be able to be connected to maintain the illegal business and
Yeah.
keep our property value. Um, I don't know.
And then the only last thing that I wanted to touch on and um Kate was there as well. We had a we worked with Eva and had a discussion on parking in downtown, which we did talk downtown, but it turned into a lot of, you know, rail trail parking and how do we how do we work with the lakeside park and the boat camp and all the different agencies vying for for use around the downtown as well. And it was a it was a very good initial discussion to start having some of those discussions. We did have someone from the Northern Rail Trail here, which was good to make those connections and start working with them. And I they actually had written a letter supporting our parking plan along Mascoma Lakeside Park. So we'll be passing that along to DOT as well. And so it's it's good to make those initial contacts and to to just start those discussions and and be talking. So that was a a good good discussion as well. And that's all I have for a town manager report.
Uh, no communications at this time. I think we're up for the town meeting review, discussion and preparation.
Okay, in your packet, there's um just a little highlight slideshow that Alicia put together of, you know, just working through the different articles and just wanted to have some discussion about about how we wanted to move through this, um, working with Lindsay as well on what we wanna do to preparing for town meeting and making sure that things are organized properly. And then if there's anything we specifically wanna talk about during a slide, let's make sure to voice those too so we can be prepared for it.
I didn't want to, but you were stuck in the mail the other day. So um when you're introducing the board of selectmen, um you might wanna introduce me too. Good thing, if you're gonna let me make motions. But if I'm getting an excuse, I have some, you know.
That's why it seems a journey.
Saturday is the farming day. Darn. I was like, wait. That was the only thing I thought of at first stage. Are you pasting it or no? We're just gonna go over it like this?
Yeah, we can just go. It'd be probably easier than
Nope, that's fine.
There's not necessarily changes. You can just tell me what slides you don't like.
If we say we don't like the slide, we have to revise it ourselves, right?
I think we can guess if there was a suggestion.
Step out for just a minute.
Everyone can take a stretch break for this, right?
Hello? Hello?
That's the only thing I remember seeing.
It's kind of a big one. It's kind of a big one.
See, I was like
Since you're gonna be talking for a while, it's weird.
Well, we'll figure it out eventually. I like that you put your um pronunciation of your name.
Well, sometimes.
Except I have to tell you that if I say um, so I say A, right, A, tap, not A, and that's into
A dog.
So I was like, you could be A, Lisa.
That's fine.
I was like, oh, that's the new handed her pronunciation.
At the time, well, anyway.
And while you guys are looking through those, I had just planned to use them the slides from the public hearings for the SB two and for the town buildings.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, uh, I'm all the way to article eighteen, which is the end. Sorry. But I can wait.
Yeah, I will also be speaking on CIP. So anybody that's sat in on that, I'll possibly use some help when we get there.
Like, who's on CIP right now? Not me. I'm sure. Are you on CIP?
I'm with Dan Kylie and Sam.
But Dan is, Dan is traveling.
Neither of them will be there.
Uh, I haven't been on CIP for two years.
Ed McClellan.
Might be.
I think he might be one of the last ones.
It is here. Yes, that's not in town. So I'm on Friday.
Your streak doesn't wanna be on it anymore, so it's
He's been very generous saying yes one more time, I think, the last time. So
So I have slides of what's in there and what were proposed to spend and so I can I can talk.
All you have to do is talk about it and hold up the nickel because it's tradition. Nobody round me out. It's just a nickel. Um. I just was thinking, uh, so on article eighteen, um because that is the to hear reports of agents, others, committees and other officers here to for chosen and pass any vote relating there to. In plain English, we let other people talk at the end of the meeting. I was wondering if when we invite other people to make presentations, if we could specifically invite master planning task force first, if that would be amenable to everybody. That way we have it written down and we don't forget in our excitement to maybe go home, eat food, things we like to do.
Yeah, having a list of who wants to present would be helpful because I would listen. So if master planning task force wants to be there, then that would be number one.
I can't remember. I would
I'm sure that Lindsay would remember.
What?
When they get to the last article and you invite people to speak.
Usually no one speaks.
Uh, usually, well, so last year, some people that spoke um the last two years, they had like an article almost to to like get up and speak, you know, it was it was it was in a different spot. So uh there was an energy commission one and and they actually have an article. Um
Oh, there were things that were tabled.
Yeah, well, there was things that were tabled, but also like, so last year, mass change, mass playing that, um, sorry. Uh, was was asking for money. So they had their own section. Um, we like want to get up and speak or we David will be practically um wanting to get up and represent um and give the update. Um uh, I think like the solar group last year, so it was it was an actual article that we decided to table it and that's what they
There is a community power plan on the warrant this year. So the energy committee is gonna be doing the presentation for that anyway. So
Great.
But the other article um is not back on the warrant.
Okay. So there and and so, yeah, typically, not really too many people get up unless they wanna say thank you to whoever. And I haven't seen any of this, so I don't know if we're doing thank you to volunteers.
Yes. I I sent it to you. Do you want me to send it to you? Okay?
I I literally just came from work, so I don't know.
Oh, well, you don't have it with you now. Here, let me give you my copy.
No, that's okay. If you send it to me, you're gonna get me clean the copy after this, but
Yes, I'm gonna fix it.
About that, the beginning, what's the plan?
Yes.
Where, tell me where I'm speaking and I need a list of names.
I even have the pronunciation of my name.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
Supposed to get all take lessons.
I know it's hard.
It's not that it's hard. I just I started one. Once I start messing up names, it's just like dominos.
Dave, if he has a question?
Dave?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Thank you for the reminder. Uh, I'll get this system down sooner or later. Um, the for for article eighteen, um just no no official action can be taken uh by the meeting for for that article. So um I think it maybe be it's it's sometimes disappointing to uh groups that uh don't haven't gotten on the warrant elsewhere. Um, but that's uh um, the uh official ruling of uh from the state.
I'm aware. Yep.
Yep. Thanks for reminding us. That's good. We're ready to go on to the next item?
I'm there. I'm there.
Uh, the ARPA funds discussion.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
To come back to this select board, um, I know you guys have discussed ARPA funds before. We haven't really discussed it since I've been here in January, but we have received the official ruling from the US Treasury. The final rule came out in January. We've had time to to look through that a little bit and attend a few webinars. And one of the big changes in that is instead of having to calculate your revenue loss to accept revenue loss, we can now accept revenue loss up to ten million dollars, which means most any use which is governmental units under fifty thousand in population can just accept their whole ARPA grant as revenue loss with very little strings attached. I won't say no strings attached, but we don't really have to justify any revenue loss. We can just use it up to there. The main thing, the only string that really comes with it is that it has to still be spent on a governmental service. That is a very, very broad definition. So I know road work, things like that were not allowed in the interim rule. But if you accept it as revenue loss and you repair a road, that would be counted as governmental service. So there's there's a few things and I put some ideas on here to to spark some thought. One thing that did come up that may need a little bit more um research, if you guys are looking at possibly doing that, but the four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that were or four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that were receiving from ARPA funds could possibly be used to purchase the land for the public safety building if that passes, which would be pretty much the majority of what we would need for that. And um, if that's something that the select board wants us to put time into, kinda dotting the I's, crossing the T's, making sure that would work. The purchase of land has a few more strings to it and it needs to really fit under the COVID response type guidelines, but we do believe that a public safety building with an emergency operations center in there would would meet that definitions.
And if that were a sure thing, that might help the 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 whole thing to pass.
Yeah.
I think
We can look into that and
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Because we talked about what early on when we first learned that we might get something kind of, and then it became more of a reality. Um, we had talked about like water and sewer, not just because you didn't know what you were going to be able to do. But there was also discussion about the fact that you're kind of favoring one subset of citizens over another.
Yeah.
And I think um even the sidewalks, right? Like I love sidewalks. I come downtown, but not everybody uses downtown for whatever reason. So this is something that is truly a full town benefit and there's the the public good.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't think you can argue that it everybody doesn't benefit in some way from having access to, you know, forms of public safety because everybody uses it at one time or another, even if they don't realize that the police are directing traffic, right? Um, so I think I really like this and I hope that it's an opportunity for us to use that money because I've definitely been struggling mentally with fairness about how you choose one project or whatever.
Yep. Well, I like it as well. And before we get to that, you know, the interim rule for public projects was water, sewer, broadband. That's really about all you could do. And then there were some ways that you could wind in, you know, economic development and those things by benefiting some business or incentivizing businesses. Just like you said, I think this is this is one project of maybe a few that we can think of that would truly benefit everybody and you know, lower the tax rate if this is a project we're going to do anyway.
And really, safety-wise, we get, right? We've looked at these three public safety buildings. And while people had good intentions over the years and surely, you know, we appreciate it, they've deteriorated or they just don't meet meet modern public safety needs. And I particularly think of, you know, the sanitation and the cleanliness and the exposure to the diesel fumes. You know, we're trying to You know, we're trying to save people's, to have a group save people's lives, and then we're going to expose them to diesel fumes and have nowhere for them to decontaminate. That kind of was a really hard follow for me. I think, I mean, and that is, this would really honor the point of the money, right, which is COVID, I think.
Yeah, the whole emergency response.
Yeah, yeah. And honor the commitment our responders have made to sticking with us the whole time, because wow.
Well, that's a very hard hitting item to bring up when we get to that point. I think that opens a lot of eyes to them, your eyes.
Yeah.
Tracy?
Oh, thank you. So since that money can only be spent at the discretion of you select persons, is it fair to assure ourselves that one of you would be willing to speak to that particular issue at town meeting?
Yeah.
I, I think either of us could.
Thank you.
Then we can guarantee that.
Great, that, it's a wonderful use of those funds, I must add.
So you'll let us know if all the Ts get across, right?
Yeah, I talked to Roy today, and me and him will both put some time into seeing if we can figure this out prior to town meeting.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the Mascoma Sailing Club concession agreement.
Um, before we move on there, I would like to see if we can get a motion. I wrote a motion at the bottom of that.
I'm sorry.
Just to, what I'd like to do is get a motion to use the, or accept those funds as revenue loss, so we can start getting that paperwork done.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager or their designate to accept the ARPA funds in the amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. And as revenue loss, I'm sorry, guys. And hereby authorize the town manager or his designees to take such accident, action and execute all documents that may be necessary.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye. But now you all know why we're trying to. Was bad.
And now we go on to Mascoma Sailing Club concession agreements.
So there's an agreement in your packet. I had, this was written by Jack and agreed to with the sailing club last year. And it had never been approved or signed by the select board.
Does it need to be signed by the select board, or could it be, could we authorize you to sign it?
I guess you could authorize me to sign it. We'd have to maybe rewrite this agreement that's already been signed by them. Well.
I feel kind of uncomfortable signing something that's not dated. I'm kind of picky on that. I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I think, um, I always feel more comfortable when it's filled out and signed and dated on the actual date, so that nobody argues like, it was done in two sets, especially when there's a large section of time, I think, that's a lot with that.
Yeah, I think this was, this was just signed and sent to me this year, so I can put that email if you want them to have the date on it, or above your name is where the date is supposed to go for actually executing the document.
Yeah, and there's a place for a date.
Yeah. So I'm a big fan of, after, um, of having by, and then like the, especially, like on an agreement. I understand a lot of things that we sign here, like the minutes, we just sign them on the day we voted, but like have the date and the dates, so that each party gets the date, because we can't realistically expect everyone to end up in the same place at the same time. Some, some people have lives. Um, I mean, would it be appropriate to make a motion to authorize you to update the agreement to be executed by the town manager and further authorize him to execute on behalf of the board of selectmen or something like that? Or do you know?
I think, yeah, that would simplify it in nice fashion.
Or do you even need a, we authorize you to execute it?
Yeah, I'd just do it maybe similar to the last motion, that we authorize entering into this agreement and authorize the town manager and or his designate there.
Exercise, okay. I make a motion to authorize the town manager or their designate to execute the concession agreement Mascoma Lakeside Park Enfield, New Hampshire with the Mascoma Sailing Club. That was not the most nice thing. So the concession agreement pertaining to Mascoma Lakeside Park with the Sailing Club, does that make more sense? I'm so sorry. Can I have some?
I would write it that, uh.
Yeah.
That you make a motion to, to accept the agreement.
Okay.
The conceptual agreement from the Mascoma Lakeside Park, um, between the town of Enfield and the Sailing Club, and authorize the town manager to execute all documents.
That's what I want to say. I made that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Dave?
Thank you. Um, I think the issue here was, you know, it sort of got left a little hanging in the transition. And, uh, the importance of this is that we do it right for, for the, the federal, uh, grant that will be coming through the state. And, uh, it sounds okay to me, but I'm not the lawyer that'll be arguing this.
Thank you.
I think we can argue that we made a good faith attempt to do all the right things, and it will be noted in the meeting minutes, right?
Next, we have smoking concerns on town property.
So you have in your packet, a, a little write-up by me. I was, I got a, um, email from Amy Stewart, and she had some concerns with the, the rules for Hughes Park that didn't address no smoking or use of tobacco in the, on, in the town park. I know from talking with Alyssa and others that this was discussed when Ryan was here about smoking in the outdoors and whether we should or should not ban that from our facilities.
We even talked about in terms of the rec field.
Yeah.
I don't know where that, I'll have to go back and look at notes.
I did.
Is there anything posted at the rec field, for smoking?
What we ended up doing were the signs that say, uh, asking smokers to be considerate of other people.
Uh, yes.
Similar to what's right outside the sprinkler.
And I remember not loving that and understanding why it was being proposed that way, but, so I am a proponent of removing smoking and tobacco use from all town facilities and properties. Um, I understand that people feel strongly about it, but, uh, you know, finding spit containers in the park is not really my favorite thing, um, and having that around children, I just think it's a hygiene issue, and we do see it.
Do you want to include vaping, like we do in our personal balls?
I think if you say nicotine, because we don't allow people to come to work under the influence of banned substances or whatever, you know, whatever we want to call them, like, you know.
We would allow them to wear a nicotine patch, I believe, but they can't physically smoke or vape.
But that's a very different, like, to consume a product, you know, either by smoking or orally. We don't allow people to drink or smoke marijuana or do cocaine, right? I mean, it just is, so allowing somebody to get a different kind of high is, I think, to me, I don't think it has a place on town property. People can do whatever they want in their personal lives, and that's just my personal opinion. I stay out of people's home life and other business, but I think in town property, we have a duty to keep children and other people safe and healthy.
Yeah, I think particularly because Hughes Park is a place where there are many children and many families. Uh, same with the rec field. We, we can't say it's just all about consenting adults or anything like that. Same with, you know, outside the door of the, uh, Enfield Town Hall. Not good.
I understand it was like.
Here too.
Yeah, yeah. And I know it's not always popular, but I think it's becoming more commonplace for companies to do this, and.
It's, it's not going to be popular at all. We, we have to face that.
I, I'm, I'm willing.
There'll be a, yeah, there'll be some feedback on that to us.
Does it impact our?
But I'm willing to go along with this, so I think it's important.
I don't think it impacts our insurance directly, but, you know, use of your insurance does impact your rates. So the effect that that may have on people and how they use our insurance could possibly increase our health insurance rates, those types of things.
Because in private companies, they typically pitch to you that having a no tobacco policy, right, is, can, gives you certain, I guess, mandates or.
Right.
I, I don't know how it's current, you know, insurance changes all the time. I can't even follow it.
I, I think when we first instituted the no smoking rules within the buildings, you know, we, we saw, you know, smoking outdoors by the door is, is a relief valve, right? I think we've progressed now, that we, we can't allow.
I think we've progressed a little. I would also like the flexibility to set a designated area for employees in those places on.
I think that, that's, that's a good idea.
Absolutely, setting an appropriate area of your, after an avenue.
Away from the front door somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Dave Flot has a question. Where's Andrew?
David?
You're muted.
Okay, there you go. Um, obviously, you're on, uh, on totally solid ground from a, a medical and public health perspective. Um, and if you want to designate something, you know, far away from, uh, um, you know, other engine, you know, uh, uh, other users, um, that, uh, people, um, can, can, can partake, um, I don't support that, but I can understand that. As long as it was someplace that, uh, did not, uh, leave, uh, smoke in the air or residue, that, uh, people had to scuff away as, as they went into town hall or use of any of the other facilities.
Absolutely right.
And I guess I see that as if you tell somebody they can't do something at all, sometimes it's easier to give them a choice that isn't their favorite than to say absolutely not. Um, so.
Yeah, around the community building, should we designate a place or say?
Somewhere in the park further away, because the smoking by the door, I mean, they're throwing the cigarette butts right there. It's like, come on, guys.
Yeah, no, I would agree by the door is not a good spot, but should we designate a spot? Should we come back?
I think you could give the whole park, like the community building park, you give it one spot further away. Pick a spot where they won't light any trees on fire or throw in the bark mulch.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can.
Makes sense. I don't want to be the one choosing that spot.
We can, we can work on that, and we can come back to you with, with rules and how we would like to implement that.
Back to you again, David.
Next to the dumpster at the community building in Hughes Park might be appropriate.
Yeah?
And then if we get a dumpster fire, we're blaming it on you. I'm kidding.
Okay. Board and committee membership appointment. We have a list?
Yes, well, and I gave you a legend, so you can kind of familiarize yourself with what it all means. Unfortunately, the list came out very tiny, and I didn't have a chance to check the packet, so I'm going to screen, Jane.
Hi, you're saying we're gone?
Well, I'm sorry. So there it's on the screen.
I do have one, I just can't, I keep logging up. If anybody has any notes on how to wear glasses.
Well, you have, there's a couple of pages there that are going to be for May second, so the budget committee, anything in black is a select board appointment that will wait until the second, and when you have the new board in place, there's no need to do it now. But if we scroll down to, um, so just to, for an update, zoning board, um, there was a resignation, Celia Faro resigned, um, recently. It was on the twelfth, so there's going to be a vacancy there, uh, which we will advertise. Well, CIP committee, so we have Eric Craig does not want to be reappointed. Dan Kylie would like to take a, um, one-year appointment instead of a three-year. So that will leave us three slots, which we have no applicants for. So if you know of anyone, or you can vote to appoint, um, Dan to the one year, that would be helpful.
I make a motion, we appoint Dan Kylie to the one-year slot on the Capitol and Parliament.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on the Conservation Commission, Shirley, Shirley Green has, would like to be reappointed. Sue Hagerman would not. Um, and we have two vacant positions, because Dolores Struckoff has submitted her resignation on April sixth. We do not have anybody actually applying for those three vacancies at this point, but if you can reappoint Shirley, if you can.
I make a motion, we reappoint Shirley Green to Conservation Commission.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe tough to fill up.
I think you're going to have a really hard time filling up.
Energy Committee, we have, uh, Kim Quirk and Joelle and Courtney, whose terms are expiring. They would like to be reappointed. There is one vacancy, uh, for regular members, and then Charlie Clark would like to let his alternate status lapse.
I don't know if we allow that.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're going to keep doing some work, you just don't want to be on the committee.
I understand. We don't, we don't actually allow people to retire graciously around here, you know? It's not tradition. Um, I'll make a motion that we appoint Kim Quirk and Joelle and Courtney, uh, but reappoint them to Energy Committee.
I'll second that.
I'll give that a aye.
Oh, all in favor?
So the Heritage Commission is a little bit, uh, more interesting. So Marjorie Carr and Shirley Green have their terms expiring, so they would like to be reappointed. Suzanne Hinman would like to become an alternate. Mary Ann Hagan no longer qualifies, because she now resides in Lebanon. Meredith would like to be appointed as a regular member, so that she will no longer be ex officio. Uh, and there will be a slot, because Suzanne Hinman would move to alternate status. Mary Ann Hagan no longer qualifies, so there's that opening. We'll need one more, and then we'll have the ex officio, actually, the ex officio.
You don't necessarily need an ex officio, right?
Yes, we do. That is.
Oh, that is legal required?
Yeah, it's required.
That's true.
But then when you, you can, so I would recommend the appointment here for Meredith be effective May one, and that way, it's after town meeting, she's no longer selectman, and then on May two, when you come and meet, then, uh, you can select.
Your select board.
Okay.
Member. I'm going to make a motion exactly like Alyssa described.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
What?
All in favor?
Do you like that? No, I can, okay, great. Martin Shirley are.
You're such a good sport.
I have enough of anyone.
Suzanne Hinman, the alternate status.
Yes.
Where are we now?
Okay, now, 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 we're moving down to Mascoma Lakeside Park. Having a selectman's representative is completely optional. Meredith was the selectman's representative, because she happened to be on the, the committee and a selectman.
My, my, yeah.
But there's no set number of, of members on this committee, so she can be reappointed for a, a longer term.
Yeah.
Would you do a three-year term and have everything still stagger and not be a selectman's rep? Ken Warren would like to be reappointed, and we have a vacancy.
And I think.
She could.
Maybe May second, when we can have a little more of a discussion, we should set a number.
Yeah, because I was going to say, this committee was a fundraising committee, and while I know they continue to do some fundraising, in terms of operations and choices, they're kind of winding down, because that portion is transitioning to professional management under the town. I know they still have some residual fundraising to do, and I don't want to deprive of the members, but it'd be good to hear what they actually need.
Well, and I think it would be good to continue to work with them to design the park as well, and, but having staff oversight and moving forward, so. We ran into a few issues, and I actually postponed their last meeting, because we did not, we definitely did not have a quorum of their membership in the room.
Yeah.
And it is, if it's working this way, it is a public board.
Yes.
Doing public work, so they should have a set number, so we know what the quorum is to meet ninety-one A requirements.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think, um, it's also important to make sure that we have structure for them, so that they understand what their roles and responsibilities are going forward. Do you want to, um, do you want to appoint Ken in the interim, since he's, and Meredith, or we want to wait until we do the committee side? I don't, I don't expect we're going to outsize anybody, right?
And there's one vacancy right now, so Meredith can just slide into that vacancy. And you can, I have, how many of that may just?
So there's nine slots on there now, as an optional select board representative. I don't.
I think nine is plenty.
That's plenty, yeah.
Because they could always enlist volunteers to do.
And I, I really don't think we want to start having selectmen reps to committees that don't require them by law, unless we, as a board, feel it's essential.
Yeah.
And I think in this case, we really don't.
Right, and this is not a required one, it's strictly optional, it's up to you.
Yep.
But if you'd like to appoint Meredith effective May one and reappoint Ken Warren.
Did I hear a motion?
Yes, you did. That was my motion.
And I'm seconding that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, she lead.
I didn't hear, did you reappoint Meredith?
Yes. Yes, we did.
Effective May first, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because we have to appoint her May first, so that she can go in. Yep. Yep.
Okay, old home days committee. They happen to have, there's, there's 10 members for this board. So that we can actually appoint Meredith as a regular member. And Pam Smith, who is a new applicant, you have a copy of her application in your packet. And that will give you your 10-member board.
And no selectman's rep.
I think I'm on that without, they need, they were very good about coming to us last time in question. But I would expect they would interface more with your office than the select board, right? We kind of got into some of this day to day just because we didn't have someone full-time and now I would feel more comfortable if they worked directly with you.
Would you make a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion. What? Oh, no, I think we're leaving it, right?
To reappoint Meredith and accept Pam Smith's application.
You got it?
Yes.
Yes.
Catching up.
Okay, now, one of them, one of them should be for a one-year appointment and one can be for any term. So we keep the staggering kind of even.
Okay, so it, I think it'd be nice to give Pam a three-year. I mean, she, this would be a new appointment for her and I think Meredith is very likely to get a subsequent appointment, if that makes sense. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. I'm going to have forms for you at your next meeting, by the way. Okay, then we have the planning board. Now here, David Frack and Phil Vermeer would like to be reappointed. Somehow we seem to have gotten a little off kilter with our term expiring, so Kim Gahart would like to become an alternate. And that leaves an opening for one more person, Tim Jennings, who has put in a new application. So I would, if you want to reappoint, I would do one of them till 2024 and the other, the two till 2025.
So can Eric remain vice here of the planning board while he's a selectman?
No, but he's not a selectman yet.
Yeah.
So that one will come open.
It'll become open on May 1st.
Gotcha.
So you can't fill it yet.
And then I might not be the ex officio. We could like draft drafts. Or you could just have it.
Right. Because you're also on the budget committee, right? That'd be the thing.
I'm going to say that both of those will end.
Yep, and then we'll just talk about.
And then you'll probably have to make the decision whether you prefer planning or budget or whatever.
John and I are amenable to letting you pick somebody.
Although I have to say, I like budgets.
You do like budget. That's good.
Okay, so.
It must be.
Are we assigning these budgets within the motion, like the terms?
Well.
So we'll, I'll make a motion to reappoint David Frack and Phil Vermeer.
Do you want to do them for three-year terms?
Three-year terms? I think that makes sense because they're, that's the one that got off kilter, right?
Yes, and then Tim can be for two years.
And then Tim would be for two years. And my expectation is Tim has a long-term commitment to this town, so I hope he would want to reup.
Yeah. I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have recreation. Joel King resigned on March 16th. Amy Stewart would like to be reappointed. And then we have a new applicant, James Ivy, who could fill the vacancy. Which would be just for one year if you appoint, reappoint me, I prefer.
I'll make a motion, we reappoint Amy Stewart and appoint James Ivy.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no applicants for the Tiff District Advisory Committee. We need two more people, if you know anybody, just open their ear.
So we have this discussion, every year we have this discussion, I say, I'll, I'll do it. And, you know, during our actual board discussion, and then I never end up on a list, but then the committee never meets. So I guess it's hard to have people come to a committee that never meets and doesn't seem to have any future.
I have talked with Ron briefly and he is going to be pulling together a meeting.
Okay.
He acts as the administrator for the Tiff District.
Yes, I, I talked to him as well and asked him to, to pull a meeting together, but to wait till aftertown.
Yeah, absolutely. Because it's just hard to generate interest when people are like, and we lost people along the way because it didn't meet, so it was an easy thing to shove off the cliff. That being said, I think there are prior members, if they needed some institutional knowledge, who'd be willing to share some of their knowledge without rejoining.
Now, does this need a select board person?
No.
It does not. I just had an interest in getting it going because I think we need, we can't just let it surf there because we made a commitment to reevaluate it.
I might be able to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I just think it should get a little pushed forward. I don't care.
As long as it's not a lifetime commitment.
We only do lifetime commitments and then we take your soul. You know, we don't do, we don't do retirements around here. I know, I think that's, I think it would be fantastic though, because when we hit a point where we had to reup for the Tiff, it was, the argument was like, we have to because we don't have another plan, and I don't like that argument. So I think we made a commitment to have better discussions, have them meet and really lay out, is this a good financial tool for Enfield? And we need to be able to answer that question and not be like, whoop.
Yep. You're right. So we'll do that.
Okay, so for outside organizations, Jim Taylor is ready to let somebody else do advanced transit, but I do not have anybody to fill his slot. He still has a term that doesn't expire until 2023, but they'll go anytime if anybody else can find anybody who wants to do that for us. Enfield Village Association is sort of optional, but it's sort of required.
It's in their bylaw.
But it's interesting that they would require a select board member and the select board members don't have a choice.
Well, that was back when the town was giving them a yearly stipend of $10,000 or something.
We talked about.
It's changed.
So the discussion I've had, because I've done this role twice, is that it's not required to be a member of their board, but they want someone there basically, because I know in the bylaw, so Meredith had opted to be a full member again, and she's done it more than once. And then I said to them, I think it makes more sense for me to act in a liaison type fashion, trying to make an appearance at your meetings so that information is flowing back and forth. But not, I, I don't, I don't really feel comfortable voting on things. It just seems like double the thing.
I think a town rep of some kind, though, on the board would be good, whether it's select board or staff or whoever.
Yeah.
And that's something you can do in May. You don't have to make that decision now. It would obviously, it's a black one not to be done.
And maybe this goes along with a discussion on how we are going to work on economic development, because that might be the tie-in with staff. I kind of do separate things for them anyways to chip in.
Yeah.
But I would not mind, you know, if they were amenable and the town was amenable.
Definitely benefits to both. There's things that a nonprofit organization can do.
Yes.
Economic development-wise that the town cannot do. And then there's things the town can do that they cannot, so.
And getting that.
Having that tie-in, I think would be good.
So the Mesquite River Local Advisory Committee, we have, we're down to one representative who I understand is still going to the meetings, but I have not been able to get any response either by multiple different email addresses that I've tried or phone to get a response as to whether or not he wants to be reappointed. So at this point, his, his term's been up and he's still going out. I can keep reaching out to him. Maybe he's on vacation.
Or we could do the traditional asking of the partner.
Well, I actually reached out, I'm trying to her too.
Oh, okay.
And I've got nothing.
So they aren't.
Yeah, because they're, she usually answers and she was in, she was in our planning board.
Oh, maybe I'll have.
But she was, was she on Zoom? She was on Zoom. Oh, you weren't, I'm so sorry. Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, she was on Zoom.
They have been traveling. They finally got their new RV.
So maybe that's.
That's not the driveway. I don't know anything on that.
That's a clue.
They must not be checking their email. Let's see, then that brings us to, the last one is the Enfield Chaker Village Scenic Byway Committee, which is loaded with vacancies. Mary Ann Hagan, moving to Lebanon, is no longer qualified to serve as an Enfield representative, but Lebanon needs some and she's got all kinds of qualifications, so she's going to try and get on the Lebanon as their rep. Meredith would like to stay on and, and she can, but she'll just no longer be a select board rep. She's appointed till 2023. So if you know anybody who would be interested in serving on.
So, and this is something that has a set number already by some definition?
This is the number of members that were appointed prior because they were already serving, but then you've decided to get more formal and we appointed them for three-year terms. They were already serving at the time. So it's not our committee exactly. It's a regional one, so it's.
I think it's connected with the Upper Valley.
Yeah.
Right, I was just wondering who set this, like if the number was set, and so if they set the number.
The number that I was, I had from the mem, this was the membership list, the length of it.
Okay.
Prior. It's not my committee, so I don't really have.
I was just wondering how urgent it is to try to like mitigate participating versus not.
I don't know how urgent it is, but.
No, if we're, if we're working on this grant and we move forward, then we're going to have more to do. Other than that, right now, they haven't been meeting much because we have the extension application in, but there's no board at the state level that can approve that application, so it's sitting in limbo. The governor did away with that committee and reinstated it.
I did reach out to Upper Valley Senate for more information, but they haven't got back to me either.
Yeah, I talked to Alex. Alex is on vacation this week, who's in charge of this.
Right, and so following town meeting, we're going to reup our list of openings anyways, I would assume.
Yeah, I would say we leave these three on there for now. We get someone to fill them, redo. If you guys would like to reappoint Meredith, we can do that.
Well, actually, Meredith doesn't need reappointing at the moment. She was, she was acting as the selectman's rep, but she was appointed as a three-year term.
And we don't.
Not our committee.
Right.
We don't need it.
Oh, you don't need one, no.
Yeah, so I would leave her as this.
Yeah, I'll just take the select board rep off of her desk. So that is it.
Or we could just appoint her for three more years, so.
It's one of those lifetime appointments.
Yeah. It's like you're not there, you're president.
Okay.
Dave has his hand up. Yeah.
Dave?
Alisa, if you are unable to get in touch with Alf, well, we know Alf and Linda quite well and have contacts, so I can, we can reach out if you get back to me.
Okay.
Okay, we have some current use applications, veterans' tax credit. We have other business to come before the Board of Selectmen, such as public comment.
And I have a screen, some screen shares for that. Dave, I think, has some public comments.
Okay.
We have a resignation or two to.
Do you want to accept those?
I think we have at least, is it two?
Two.
Yes. Oh, no, three. Those Heritage as well, right? So I will, we accept the resignations with regrets.
I'll second that.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
This is going to be just a minute.
You just need signatures on the current item. Just want to send those. You know how we love signing things?
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
We're ready. Go ahead.
Okay, um, this is in part a, a bit of a trial run. And thank you so much to Alisa for doing the, the screen sharing, but for future reference, it may be a mechanism for team attendance and you, and transmission of information. These are, these three slides from screen sharing are all from either CDC or New Hampshire DHHS COVID dashboard type of information and show a resurgence of COVID, not only in New Hampshire and Grafton County, but also regionally in New England. And there have been Grafton County, if you, depending on which, which map you look at, is either high community transmission or substantial community transmission. The category that the CDC had previously recommended masks for indoor, for, for use at indoor events. There are currently, as of today, nine active cases of COVID in Enfield, six in Canaan, which is a substantial surge, given our small population. And the total for the state of New Hampshire is 450 per 100,000 population, which is sort of right on the borderline between substantial and, and high risk. Presenting these as an issue, not necessarily that anything needs to be done right now by the board as a man, resumption of your mandate or anything like that, but that serious consideration needs to be taken about what metric or criteria you would use for reinstitution of more significant community COVID mitigation factors, including masking, et cetera. We've done quite a lot. We did get beyond the Delta surge and, and Omicron. The first variant did not cause a great deal of increase in hospitalization or, or death. The, the new variant is still early and it, but it's clearly more infectious. And we're beginning to see an uptick in hospitalizations, which often is a prelude to increased deaths. And so I think it's something that needs to be closely monitored and some careful thought put in place in terms of what and when we would reinstitute a more vigorous mitigation.
I took a look today, the CDC guidelines, because I get a notification from the office, I president. And, and there is, as Dr. Boeck said, a slight incline, but interestingly, the CDC has classified Grafton County as media. And the recommendations are, if you are at high risk for severe illness, talk to your healthcare provider about whether you need to wear a mask and take other precautions, stay up to date on COVID-19 vaccines and get tested if you have symptoms. And I think that's kind of where we, we have been right along and the reason we're wearing masks in this room, to take care of each other and, and people who need it. But I feel pretty comfortable right now following the CDC guidelines. I'm certainly willing to continue watching them myself and I think the town and others.
I would agree. I think right now we're at a decent place. We need to watch these numbers as the uptick happens, but, you know, relaxing the, the mask guidelines when we're in, in smaller concentrations and indoor settings is okay, but I think it's a, a good practice to continue asking people to wear masks when we're bringing people in together to meet or to gather.
What are now the requirements for Whitney Hall for the town offices?
Right now, the town offices, there's no mask requirement. We do ask people that are at higher risk to, to wear masks when they, when they come in if they, if they so choose, but it's, it's good if we're congregating people together. We have had a couple of days in the clerk's office where there was a little bit of a line, but for the most part, it's one or two people at a time. And so we have reduced that mask requirement there, but when we do gather or bring public in for a meeting, then we, we require masks.
I absolutely want to do that for the open houses.
Yeah, and I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, we've seen a resurgence and actually folks just getting plain old sick, right? And, and that's not fun either. So I think people have learned a lot about how to keep themselves safe and make good choices. And we should be empowering people to make, make better choices and reminding them occasionally that like, if you know you have COVID and you've got a solid exposure, maybe you should make a good solid choice to stay home. Not everybody makes fabulous choices, but we can continue. Not everybody makes fabulous choices, but we can continue to ask them to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
So use of the community center, is that pretty wide open?
It is. When we gather there at the town function, we require masks. If people are doing their own events there, we do not require masks.
So pretty much what we are in control of is in a town, is where we tend to be more active. And we're a little bit loath at this point to put up signs saying this is the way everyone has to be everywhere.
Yeah, we do have signs still recommending it. Like I said, if you're at higher risk or if you're unvaccinated, but it's a little bit of an on-your-own thing and to protect yourself.
I do think too, where we have smaller committees gathering in these buildings that not necessarily have great air circulation, instead of singling out the person who may have a particular condition, it's more inclusive for us right now, just sort of asking. It doesn't hurt us for these small gatherings, but.
For the candidates meeting in the community building, we used, uh, we, we asked people to wear masks.
Yeah.
That makes perfect sense.
And, and you know, the coffee on Friday, you saw people who, they distanced, right, which is one of the practices that helps, and you saw a lot of masks on risks. And so I think people are, they know how to be respectful of each other and just continue to invite people to make those strong choices.
And we have our staff to, to keep a mask close by and to put them on if anybody asks.
There are two vaccine clinics coming up in town, and the signup was on the list serve. I don't know, did they send you a?
Um, I think they sent one.
No, so I, and it's to get boosters. So if you are fifty or older, you can get your second booster. And you get it right here in town. It's on signup genius. So the location is Community Lutheran again, and, and the same folks with the public health banner coming. So that's fantastic. And there are two signup dates that will allow boosting of people who got their first and second shots in the first round and people who are getting their second booster or second booster period, right? Um, and I think that includes some of the children, because children of five and older are qualified for a booster now, so.
Really?
Yeah, I believe so. Sue probably knows something that I do. I'm kidding. You're like. I think, I'm pretty sure you can get a booster.
Yeah, there's a category of children.
Yeah, and it's just, um, and so I think, you know, there's the time requirement, but they set it up so that if you were doing the series through them as, with kids, they could do it. So that will increase our numbers too, which, and number of vaccinated and boosted folks. All we can do is offer.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we, or we need public comment, more public comment.
More public comments?
Sorry.
No public comments? Did you have your hand up?
Do you know if he's got a few minutes on?
Oh, yeah.
It's one of the core.
We're in public comments, Dave.
Whenever, no, whenever, I didn't know if you were, if your public comment were going to adjourn, so.
Yeah.
Whenever any few time.
Yeah, we have time for you.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up. Do you want to sit at the table? You are, after all, one of our representatives? So that way that we, on Zoom, can get a, our happy little owl here likes being closer.
Lovely owl. I think it's great.
Gosh, good evening. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. I'm Sue Prudential. I'm your state senator here for District Five, and I live in Lebanon. And I, I have to say that driving here tonight down Lockhaven Road reminded me of the very first ambulance call I went on as a volunteer in Enfield. I had joined the squad, we had a call, and I tried to go directly to the scene and I couldn't locate. I was so new to the town that I called in on my radio and said, I'll respond to the station. So that's a, that's like back in the early nineties, so it's always, uh, you know, good, great group, good memories. And I heard you talk about the buildings and some of the, some of the concerns. And I actually, if, if I may, would just like to say that I think that it's a matter of keeping up with the times. I remember we used to be, the fast squad was in the fire station in like a little teeny garage, and then we moved to the depot building, which was completely redone, and it was beautiful. But it's not your typical public safety building that allows for, you know, being able to actually, you know, decontaminate, control the fumes, the kinds of things that you might have to actually have as larger claims and deal with later. Instead, now we make these investments upfront when we can. I thought it would just, it's great to be here, and I'm always tapping away madly. I'm working on a, a last minute Medicaid adjustment for emergency medical services reimbursement, which would actually help with your billing of patients that have Medicaid, and we might be able to get the first increase in almost ten years on the books. So I was not like, I was not socializing. I was literally texting other senators and other advocates, and I think we might have something that's gonna go. So that will be good for you. As both Kate and your, your manager know, I have a background of being a city councilor in Lebanon. So I, I really have the, I'd like to think I have the local focus, and what's good for, you know, our communities at the heart of everything I do. And if I have any type of slip up, there are two managers that contact me. Ed is one of them, and, uh, who actually freed Julie Griffin.
Yeah.
And, uh, my, from my home city, Sean Mulholland. And I'm, I, I'd like to think that I'm always very open to the conversation, so, but I feel that you, as local communities, should be empowered and enabled to do your business and that there are times when I see legislation come in front of us that get in your way. So I'm a, I'm a vote for letting you do it. And it doesn't, the temperature isn't always that way right now, so please keep that in mind, and certainly your manager reaches out to me, but if you need to, you can at any time. There's a few things that I just wanted to talk about. I have, um, from my own bills, a majority of them are, are, you know, public health and public safety related, as well as doing some work with Medicaid and some local municipal work, because that's my background. But I wanted to share with you, and it's moving its way through. It passed the Senate, and now we're in the House, and I think we're gonna do okay there. I put together a bill with Senator Geida with like what I call the little guy in mind. So if you have a disaster in your community, you have FEMA come in, you know, and you're getting ready for your presidential disaster declaration so that you can, you know, you have your estimates and you can get your money and you can start repairs. This is a time, it, it can take a long time, and if this is affecting one or more major roads, kids can't get to school safely, it's impacting businesses, it's impacting the, just residents' ability to get back and forth, which we saw not just this summer, but in Alstead years ago. Uh, what we did is to set this bill up. It's Senate Bill four oh nine, and it's, uh, it allows the governor to de- declare a natural disaster and go, as the city or town go, it's really for the towns, small towns, goes through the, um, the process with FEMA. You can use those estimates to get a no interest loan with the approval of governor and council who meets two times a month. So you can actually make your repairs right away rather than have to wait. Not, you know, there are communities in this state that have budgets that are under two million dollars, that have populations that are under, well under a thousand, and they've had, you know, you know, complete failures of their roads because of weather. So we're just looking to provide another option. So you would never be asked to pay back more than you already borrowed, and those are the terms of it. It also gives the governor and council the ability to negotiate the payback if there's some type of problem. So that's one of the things I like to think that we did for the little, for the little guy. Uh, the build, vacant building registry is a piece of enabling legislation that has to do with basically, you know, it, it's a, it's a blight strategy. So we had some trouble with the bankers. We got them on board, and then we struggled with the election law and municipal affairs committee in the Senate about the definition of vacant, they're vacant or abandoned. So rather than see this have an untimely move to the side, I turned it into a study committee. It passed the Senate, and I met with the House last week, so hopefully we'll pass there. It might not be something your community wants to adopt, but if we can agree on those terms, then we could actually put enabling legislation forward, as initially had been done. So if you want to do it, you can. This is about preserving the character of your neighborhoods and your property values. So that's one of the reasons, the biggest reason that I love that particular, not, I, I admire that particular piece of legislation, and it was, thankfully, Ed brought that to my attention. I want to speak briefly about, uh, public health networks. That's how we deliver public health in New Hampshire outside of Manchester and Nashville, and actually Portsmouth has a part-time person. We use public health networks, the thirteen of them. They don't have any, they, well, they have funding, but it's primarily federal funding. There's some gifting that goes through from the Charitable Foundation. Yeah, my apologies too. I'm not really that great with Surrey. So what I'm, what I'm really interested in is building out this infrastructure for these public health networks to really function as the backbone here, including in your own communities. So, you know, I had moved forward first to try to, the idea was to institutionalize, put these in statute, because they're not in statute. They're just these agreements by contract, and then look at what they might grow to later. That ended up now, instead of a committee, that's a study commission, that's a commission. So thirteen public health networks, the municipal association of, and there's, and the public health officers are part of that conversation. I think that that's important to figure out what we're gonna do for the future of public health. We think of public health, we think about COVID, but public health is about child passenger safety. Public health is about smoking cessation. Public health is about managing obesity and the, just the general health of your community. So this is just one way to do it, and we're looking at that. Uh, I don't know if you've heard about, there's a bill to set up a, it's House Bill one five five two, to set up a basically certification uh, for the, for assessors, actually have a board and a certification under the Office of Professional License and Certification. So I sit on executive departments and administration. We hear retirement bills, we hear bills like this, has really mixed reviews. I don't know if you have any interest in this, but what I'm seeing are two different schools of thought and an amendment thrown in at the last minute, so I think it might, you know, sit out maybe to interim study this year. But you're gonna want to keep that in mind, because that'll be another certification, and it creates levels of certification and roles for assessing within your community that, again, would have to be licensed, certified and licensed by a board. That could have a strong impact. Property tax relief is tough these days, uh, but the things that come closest to it, one of them is something I actually heard from your manager on, and I've heard from a lot of managers, and that has to do with retirements. That's, um, House Bill fourteen seventeen. So, uh, anything that has to do with, you know, final calculations for compensation and shifting, basically taking the promise made by the state and putting that back into place, those are actually two different bills, uh, is something that I'm in favor of. Um, and there's also, there's, so there's two of those right now, which I've heard from your manager and many managers on. And the other, which is a little more up in the air, has to do with, uh, cost of living increases for retirees that haven't had them in a number of years. There was a bill to do like a one point five percent increase. That turned into a one-time five hundred dollar, like, well, I mean, we'll call it a bonus, but here instead have that. Again, I'm not sure that that's gonna go anywhere this year, but I do think that there has to be a system that retirees could depend on, especially when the cost of living is changing every single day. Uh, and there's so many things to talk about, school boards and select boards. There's legislation to actually, um, structure how your meetings would run and when your public comment would be, uh, and that people would have public comment. And what surprised me is that in all my time on a city council or any of the boards that I've been involved in, there's always been, there's been time for public comment for items that weren't on the agenda, as well as structured within the agenda. This might be a, a community-specific issue, but I'm not so sure that it's gonna make any movement outside of that. This coupled by tax caps for both communities and really focusing on school boards. Uh, and that, um, I don't think that's up to the state. I think that's up to, to local communities. Uh, landfill permitting, so we're, we're back in that conversation again this year, which has to do with what, what was going on in the North Country. So that's, you know, now more of a permitting process, and although it was ITL, an expedience legislator did not survive coming out of committee. It's gonna, there'll be a move to overturn it on the floor this week. Uh, and I'm in favor of overturning it because I actually, again, think it's up to you, and I also think that where you put your landfills shouldn't be near places where people are gonna recreate, like you have to be, knowing the work that we did in Lebanon with our landfill, and you have your own. You understand this conversation. Not everybody does. Um, last but not least, lots of discussions again around emergency powers, uh, and with the governor for a state of emergency. So we're looking at House Bill two seventy-five, which would allow a state emergency for twenty-one, start with twenty-one days. It could be renewed up to three times. For the legislature, both bodies would have to meet and decide with a super majority whether this should stay in place or not. I was on the conference committee that worked on this last year, and we couldn't come to an agreement. My background is in, like, dealing with emergencies. So I have, I think that, you know, this pandemic is something we actually planned that might happen someday, but it was, it was still, you know, those impacts continue to be felt, and people fear that this was used as a tool to basically, you know, run government amok by one person, man or woman who's ever in the governor's office at that time. I'm not sure what the final answer will be to this, uh, but, you know, I think having some control in place isn't harmful. I just don't want to get in the way. I want financial reporting to be available. I don't want to get in the way of an executive who is, a chief executive is trying to manage an emergency. I think three times being renewed before we have to meet is much more reasonable than some of the past conversations, but I'm gonna continue to follow this really closely. So I don't know if there's any questions you might have. There's some quick updates. I have been able to, you know, even though I'm trying to get this Medicaid reimbursement done, I was able to listen to some of your work along the way. So that's it. It's like speed dating.
Coming out. Great to see you, and certainly good to hear what you're up to. I think the, um, definitely interesting what's going on in some parts of the legislature right now, and I share your concerns about making sure that we can keep public health in control when, you know, in emergent services, emergent.
In this state of emergency.
Yeah, I mean, that was, uh, you know, do I like being told what to do by one person who's maybe not, doesn't have a public health background? No, but that was, there was no way to navigate that fast without it. Sometimes, to be a good leader, you just have to make it. And, yeah, it's, it is what it is there. I think, I, I'm very open to the idea that there's some discussion around it, but it, I would prefer personally, I thought Benjamin Chan was the hero of COVID in New Hampshire. And so I guess I would love to see some kind of requirement of consultation with a person who's actually a subject matter expert.
Yeah. Well, typically, a chief executive in these situations is talking to, you know, Dr. Chan and to Lori Schivenett or whoever. If it was a forest fire, they'd be talking with who heads up, you know, Forest and Lands and, you know, those multiple agencies that are responding. So each one's gonna be a little bit different. It's just a matter of, you know, whose authority is it really? How long does it go? And, um, you know, we, when I worked for the state, we actually planned for a pandemic. We, I remember talking about, uh, continuity of operations, and I, we'd be in these drills, and I'm like, that'll never happen, but we did all of the work. Well, it actually happened. So it's, it's so, it's not surprising to me, uh, but here we are. I can look back on the things that went well and didn't go well. But what we do have to do is make sure that people who are experts, who have this, who are tried and tested, have, have the ability to have the necessary conversations, and our chief executive can do their job and balance that with safety and public health. That's my opinion. I've heard a lot about this, a lot of constituents, so I, I think that this might strike a decent balance compared to where we were bef- where we were this time last year.
Of course, a lot of voters these days think that Congress is populated by rabid lunatics. To be really honest with you.
Yeah.
You know, when, when we look at what's going on with education.
Yeah.
With women's reproductive rights and, and people just literally about tearing their hair out. They go, what in the world are we gonna do?
Yeah, well.
And I'm glad to see that, you know, there are constructive things still happening.
Yeah, and you, thank you. And that, it, there are, like, these things that you bring up are very true. But when we, so when we talk about education, we talk about education, freedom of counsel, we're talking about whatever way you want to cut this, less than two thousand children. How many thousands are still in the communities that they live in dealing with this issue? And we're, you know, so there are people that are working and talking about that, you know, in a complete, you know, it still exists, but the, the light is shining here. So I, you know, maybe it's the municipal background doesn't make me better or smarter than anyone else, but I continue to try to take away at these things that I think people are talking about at home at their kitchen tables. So we did have, I will share with you, if you haven't heard about this, we did have what could be, um, if it makes it through the Senate this week, a win on, um, for women's reproductive rights from the perspective of an exception for women who are carrying a child who has a fetal fatal anomaly. They will have a choice. Okay, and so that made it through judiciary, and, you know, it's on, it's on consent. Okay, and so that made it through judiciary, and, you know, it's on, it's on consent, because people don't want, uh, the families came forward with, you know, real stories.
Oh, yeah.
And told them, and that's, so we might see some progress there. Okay.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'm, I'm available anytime, and your manager is a, you know, he's a, he's a consumer, so he is reaching out all the time on your behalf, so it's, it is good.
Want you to adjourn?
No moves.
Okay. All in favor?
You don't finish your work, is that what you're asking?
No, I s-